All right, good evening, folks. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene to regular session at seventeen oh five, five oh five. And our report out of closed session includes item one, the board took action to appoint Paige Stills, middle school principal, effective July first, 2023. The motion was brought up by Ms. Leander Blades, seconded by Ms. Marilyn Anderson, and carried five oh. And I wrote it that way. Okay, so let me, let me back up. The motion was brought up by Ms. Carrie Buck. It was, it was seconded by Leander Blades, and it still carried five oh. Okay. On portion two, the board took action to appoint Dr. Isaac Gates, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, effective June twentieth, 2023. Motion was by Ms. Leander Blades, seconded by Ms. Marilyn Anderson, and it carried five oh. Congratulations. Okay, folks, at this point, we're gonna go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance, if you'll join me.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record show that all the board members, excluding our student board member, are present. Next, I'll need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the June sixth, 2023 Board of Education agenda.
A second.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Blades. Any comments? All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries five oh. Okay, folks, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Chernus.
Thank you, President Youngblood, members of the school board. It's my privilege tonight to introduce two, two new administrators to their positions here. One is a veteran of our district, and so I'm gonna start with her, Ms. Paige Stills. For the past four years, Paige has served as an assistant principal at Valencia High School, and twice she has acted as summer school principal for our programs. Prior to her role as assistant principal, Paige taught at Kramer Middle School as an avid teacher and coordinator and Gate World History teacher. In her work as both an administrator and teacher, she's been involved in leading student support systems to improve learning outcomes and school culture. Additionally, Paige has been an instructional leader through the Avid program and an instrumental part of the Avid National Demonstration Validation process at the middle and high school levels. On top of that, Paige has also led the role of president for the Placentia Linda Unified Managers, known as PLUM, for the past two years, and recently served on the district's certificated negotiations team. Her bachelor's is in political science and single-subject social studies credential at Cal State Fullerton, and her master's in education administration is from Concordia University in Irvine. Outside of work, Paige enjoys spending time with her family and her friends, so, and she lives locally with her husband Brian and her daughter Sloan, who are in attendance with us tonight. So, I wanna congratulate Paige. In my brief time here, I've been very impressed with your work and your dedication to our students, and so, congratulations, and please come on up and, and say a few words.
Well, thank you. Good evening, President Youngblood, trustees, superintendent Dr. Chernus, and executive cabinet members. Tonight, I want to express my excitement and my gratitude in the board approval of becoming the Yorba Linda Middle School principal. Yorba Linda Middle School is a wonderful place, and it's an honor to serve the students, the staff, and the community. I look forward to continuing the traditions and contributing to the educational opportunities that are offered at Yorba Linda, Yorba Linda Middle and truly what they're, what they're known for. So, thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility. I'm eager to start our work together, and...
Go Bobcats.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Dr. Isaac Gates. Throughout his 24-year professional career, Dr. Gates has held an array of roles, including executive director, elementary and high school principal, and assistant principal and teacher. He currently serves as the Executive Director of Secondary Education for the Inglewood Unified School District, where he's responsible for the management and supervision of curriculum, instruction, and professional development. As principal of San Marino High School, Dr. Gates led the school to the number-one academic achieving high school in the state of California for three consecutive years. His other accomplishments include earning the Outstanding Administrator of the Year Award from the Los Alamos Unified School District, where he served as high school assistant principal for five years, and elementary school principal for two. Dr. Gates received his doctorate in K-12 leadership from University of Southern California. Fight on? No? No? Right on? Okay? All right. And his master's in education administration from Cal State LA. He's also has experience as an adjunct professor at USC, teaching as part of the Rossier School of Education. Away from work, Dr. Gates and his wife, Dr. Rashida Gates, who's a middle school principal in Huntington Beach, reside in Seal Beach. They have three children, David, Grace, and Emerson, who can't be here tonight, but may come later, and we look forward to having him lead our HR department and be part of our district team. So, congratulations, Dr. Gates.
Mr. Board President, Youngblood, esteemed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Alex Chernus, esteemed members of cabinet, community members and family, my name is Dr. Isaac Gates, and I am humble, excited, nervous, and really, really just proud to accept this opportunity to serve the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. In such a short amount of time, and with many conversations, it is clear to me that Yorba Linda is, Placentia Yorba Linda, P-Y-L, I'm learning, is really about family and traditions, and I look forward to jumping in with both feet and really supporting the vision of the superintendent and board and the community, and furthering those connections and educational opportunities. Thank you so much for this moment. I know my family's gonna be walking in soon. I had to look over there. But I'm just extremely excited for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
All right. It's exciting. Okay, this is gonna be the public comment announcement. The public comment cards are available, available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We're provided a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will, will be given, but please let us know ahead of time so we can assure that we're, we are prepared. We do have a civility policy. Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristics that are contained in the definition of hate crime set forth by Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. At this point, I'll need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May ninth, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent.
A second. I think Ms. Buck got that one. All right. Any comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. No student board member. Okay, also tonight, we have public hearings. We got two hearings this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and turn that over to Dr. Adamson for a brief introduction.
Well, good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I would like to thank each of you for your time and efforts in reviewing and providing suggestions for Placentia Yorba Linda's 2324 LCAP. The 2324 draft LCAP has been amended to include the feedback that we received from each of you at our study session held on April 25th. Tonight is an additional opportunity for the public to provide us with input on this draft document. Additionally, we have posted a link to a survey on our website to allow the community a final chance to provide us with additional feedback. We're truly proud of the extensive process that we follow to include stakeholder input, which you will recall involved a total of 10 different input sessions as a means of ensuring our plan is comprehensive and includes and represents all voices. Excuse me. Placentia Yorba Linda staff will consider any further recommendations from our educational partners and amend the 2324 plan prior to presenting the finalized version to you at the June 20th board meeting for your consideration and approval. Thank you, and I now return control back to you, President Youngblood.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing at seventeen seventeen, five seventeen. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding the LCAP? All right. I see no one willing to speak, so I'm gonna go ahead and close it at seventeen eighteen. Our second public hearing this, this evening is related to the adoption of the 2023-24 proposed budget. Let me turn this over to Mr. Giardano.
Well, thank you, and good evening. In addition to the public hearing on the Low Control Accountability Plan, the district's required to have a public hearing on the proposed budget for next year as well. Including the board packet is a draft budget for fiscal year 2324 that reflects the costs identified in the 2324 LCAP, key provisions of the governor's May revision budget proposal for next year, components of the general fund, any fund balance, as well as updated financial assumptions. At the board meeting on June 20th, staff will present the final 2324 budget for the board's consideration. This budget will reflect a positive budget certification and maintain reserves above the state's minimum reserve requirement over the next three years. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Youngblood.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this hearing up at seventeen eighteen. I have one speaker currently, Ms. Joelle Wong, is that correct? Ms. Wong, come on up to the podium, please.
I would like to thank the district for this allotted time. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joelle Wong. I have been in this district since kindergarten, and I will be graduating from Eldorado High School next week. In the fall, I will attend UC San Diego, which is one of the top public universities in our nation, and in the four years I have spent at Eldorado, I've taken 12 AP classes, nine honors classes, been named a collegiate scholar, scored in the 99th percentile of the SAT and the PSAT, and received a four on every single AP score report except for AP Japanese, but I did receive the seal of biliteracy, so maybe the college board was wrong. I have also been named a National Merit Scholar for these achievements. Now, I don't bring this up to brag or to gloat about my personal achievements, but because I view all of these things as a product of our district, and I hope that you can keep that in mind as I make my next few remarks. Now, our next proposed budget included a segment for substitute teaching and for things in leave of, or for resources used in teachers' absences. Now, a lot of my achievements have been made thanks to my teachers, and thanks to my teachers' great work, and I cannot deny the great work that the board has done for me and for all of our students, but our teachers have helped us and supported us through all of these years. And so I hope that we can use a more efficient, or we can have a more efficient use of our budget by allowing our teachers to do their jobs and teach within their own expert fields so they can continue supporting students like me, and so we can continue making high achievements in the future. And I hope that to all of my teachers who are here today, you have helped shape me, and you have helped me to create these high achievements so I can make my family proud, my little siblings proud, and to make my community proud. So I just implore the board to allow our teachers to continue doing our jobs and educating us, because I think they're doing a pretty good job, and as I embark into the open world as an adult, I'm confident in the skills that I have learned here, and I hope that you can all see that as well. Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there is no other speakers in regards to the proposed budget, I'm gonna go ahead and close that portion at seventeen twenty-one. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. Looks like tonight, we have thirty-four speakers, three, four, so that will ensure us of a minute per person. One minute per speaker. I'm gonna call the speakers up by name. I would like to try to get first four speakers in the front row. Once I call the next four, you guys come on up, start migrating up to the front row, and we'll get this through as efficiently as possible. Okay? So our first four include Tim Murray, Carl Sweet, Ben Peralta, and Brian Dutton. Mr. Murray, you'll go first.
I gotta turn the speech around. Good evening. My name is Tim Murray, and I am asking the board to include the lights project at Eldorado High School in the budget. From 1999 to 2007, I was both a coach and a teacher at Eldorado. I know the challenges with field space on that campus. Currently, I'm a parent of a student at Eldorado and a multi-sport athlete. The history of the project dates back to 2007. The lights were originally included in the proposal for the Performing Arts Center. When the turf was installed in 2010, the electricity and conduit was all laid under that turf. It's already there. I hope that after 16 years of waiting, Eldorado will finally have lights on this campus. It is the campus that has the most limits to its field space, and the athletic programs had suffered because of it. Why should Eldorado be the only high school in the district without lights on its outdoor athletic facility? Is that my time?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Sweet?
Yes. Okay, distinguished district personnel and school board. I am here in support of installing the lights also. I had a 16-year coaching experience at Eldorado High School, 20 years as its male athletic director, and all those years, we went without lighting on our football field. When the bond was passed in 2009, or thereabouts, they, they put astroturf or artificial turf on all the four fields. They put lights on the Esperanza Field, and Esperanza already had lights on their soccer field, and then Chappelle and Bradford are the two stadiums. I think it's long overdue for Eldorado to have lights. Our kids are operating at a deficiency or a competitive equity problem with the other schools in the district, and it's time to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, board. My name is Ben Peralta. I am a parent of four students who, three are currently attending, one has graduated. Three will go through Yorba Linda High School. One is currently a freshman at Eldorado High School. He's played football and soccer, and I've been to practices where the, they have the portable lights on, and they're woefully inadequate. I would not trust myself getting, you know, being in the face with a, with a football. Just unsafe environment. Having lights would give more flexibility for the football teams, both men and women, not football, but sports teams at the school, both for women and men. It's basically, it's not fair that Eldorado is the only high school without a lighted field. It really puts the, the boys and girls teams at a disadvantage compared to the other schools. The hundreds of hard-working student athletes that participate in marching band, tackle football, flag football, soccer, track and field, and lacrosse deserve better, as do the thousands of future athletes that will attend Eldorado High School. I thank you for your time and consideration.
There's a teacher at Eldorado who has been accused of teaching inappropriate material to her children. I am here to support that teacher unequivocally, and rather than singing the praises of this teacher, which I'm sure a lot of you are here to do, I'd like to put some, some context into what some of you might not know. So, she's accused of, of answering a student's question and including inappropriate material, but I want you to know that this is a student's asked question, so this is not part of a, the teacher's normal curriculum. I want you to know that she was answering the question in as good a faith as you can to try and give that student a, a complete and well-thought-out answer to keep them from having to go home and Google it. So I would just like you to, to keep that in mind, that this was a teacher's good-faith attempt at answering an impromptu question from a student. Thank you.
Okay, next four speakers. Let's see, Coulson, I'm not sure if I'm gonna say this, Hauktun?
Good night.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Jenny Burnett, Frank Rodriguez, and Grace Gordon. Coulson, you'll be the first up. Let them get settled first. And go ahead and tell us your name, how you say it correctly.
Coulson Hauktiel.
Hauktiel.
Hauktiel, Hauktiel, but I guess since I'm from Aldo, hawk will work just fine.
Nice.
I think we had a third member we're waiting for.
Go ahead, we'll get started.
All righty. I am also in support of Mrs. Rayberg. I was, I'm a former student at Eldorado. I'm currently at Cal State Fullerton, and I just wanna say, she's been one of the most amazing teachers I've ever had. I've known her for quite a few years, and the lasting impact of having her as an AP Environmental Science teacher has supported me through not only one, but two upper-division courses at my university. Now, I used to be a procrastinator, but in her class, I learned the value of moving forward and always getting assignments done, and this has prepared me to getting As and A pluses in these two upper-division courses. So I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Rayberg. And then also, of course, we know about the issue she's being accused of, teaching inappropriate material. However, Ms. Rayberg is simply doing her best to educate a student on a question they asked. She did this in good faith and is an amazing educator, mother, and member of the community. I just wanna ask for an applause for Mrs. Rayberg for doing everything she can to educate us students.
Next up, Jeannie Burnett, is that correct? Oh, please clarify.
That's Jenny Bremer. Thank you. My name's Jenny Bremer. I'm a teacher at Eldorado High School. I teach world history, US history, multicultural studies. Two weeks ago, our school community lost a beautiful soul. When I transferred to Eldorado almost two years ago, I sat down with Amy Madrigal and asked her about the school culture. What she said has been my touchstone since that day. Here at Eldorado, we love on kids. That's what we do, and that's what is what we do. Across the district, we teachers love on kids, we listen to kids, we talk to kids, we ask them questions, we help them find answers, we educate kids, we laugh with our kids, we love on kids. Anyone who goes into our classrooms sees this. If you go into our classrooms, you will see this. It's what we do. We love on kids.
My name is Frank Rodriguez. I'm a pro-parent activist out of Orange County, California. I'm here to show my disapproval for the behaviors in which that teacher displayed in educating students on where to find sexual objects to satisfy needs that they had no idea of learning from an educator. Teachers have an obligation to draw the line at questions in which students ask. If a student goes into a classroom and has a recommendation or question of something that they're curious about, it is up to the teacher to say yes or no, or to speak to your parents. That was a question to refer to a child's parent, not to sit on a desk and provide direction where to find these sexual objects to satisfy these curiosities that this child may have. Teachers, you have a higher obligation. You are not their parents. You are not the epicenter for all the information in which that child needs to consume. Refer to them to their parents, do your job, and stay in line. This is why I support firing of that teacher to distinguish whether or not her behavior was good or not.
I'm standing before the board and my community to discuss yet another incident at Glenview Elementary. My son is in the third-grade class, and this year, he has been repeatedly racially bullied for being black. Here are just some of the racial slurs. Yo, what color is your skin, bro? It's black monkey color. Everybody, run from the black monkey. He has been called a black monkey numerous times and by several different kids. Administration continues to do nothing about it. He was called a black monkey during computer lab class where the teacher heard. Her response, I heard, everybody calm down, everybody just sit down. That was her response to my third grader. Another incident, hey, do you know what Nigeria stands for? Nigger-ira. To a third-grade student, the only black kid in his class. Let me repeat that in case you weren't uncomfortable yet. Do you know what Nigeria stands for? Nigger-ira. To my third-grade son, who's the only black kid in his class. My son has been slammed up against a fence with such a force that it created a two-inch open gash on his skin. Glenview's response? A blue slip. I wish I had more time to tell you about all the incidences. I'm asking for somebody to look into the administration at Glenview Elementary. No mother should fear the safety of her son.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our next four speakers, Dee Lawrence Rag, Ragalar? Ragalar? Okay. Brian Kurzberg, Isabel, what is that, Ben, and Angela Conley. Please state your name once you're up there, please.
Mr. Dean Board, thank you for hearing me. Brian and I have written several fiery responses to the situation concerning Judy Rayberg, and upon reflection, I think that we all need to take a deep breath and relax. Have we collectively lost the ability to take a calm and reasoned approach to anything anymore? Everything in today's tribal environment has to be black or white, Democrat or Republican. Must discussions about teachers be limited to praise or fire? In the interest of full disclosure, we are 100% behind Mrs. Rayberg and believe she did nothing to warrant any discipline. She gave honest and accurate answers to a series of questions posed by our upper-class students that related to the matter she was presenting, and yes, was, in our opinion, age-appropriate. On the other hand, we're trying to understand what genuine outrage or veris stated concerns actually exist. Reading the public responses...
Wrap it up, sir.
Reading the public responses, we believe much of the stated outrage to be nothing more than political posturing. However... more than political posturing. However, we acknowledge-
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
-that some folks have expressed genuine concern and that cannot be ignored. Brian?
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Board. Hello, everyone out there. I'm Brian Kurzbart, a member of the Placentia Yorba Linda School District for 39 years, since retired. So, what would be so wrong with expressing our concern in a measured and reasonable manner? How about instead of calling her sick, perverted, or worse, you simply state that you felt a certain level of personal discomfort with the subject matter discussed and some of the language she used? How about asking if she could moderate both in the future? How about allowing this beloved and dedicated educator to put this surreptitiously acquired snippet into full context before bringing out the torches? This was not put into full context. There's way too much behind-the-scenes that people don't know what happened in there, and people are jumping to conclusions. We are in full support of Mrs. Rayberg.
Hello, my name is Isabel Vu, and I am a student at Eldorado. I am currently a junior, and I'm here to talk about the situation with Mrs. Rayberg. So, I want to first address the situation with the sexual objects. And I do not believe that it is reasonable to think that any student that would have these questions would go to their parents asking about these. Mrs. Rayberg created a safe situation for students to ask questions, and she answered them anatomically correctly in her anatomy class, which is available to juniors and seniors. I've reached out to hundreds of students at the school, and I have not heard anyone say anything bad about her. In fact, I've heard many of the students say that they already knew these things, and they knew where to find these things. She was only informing a student that asked a question. Thank you.
Thanks for listening. My name is Angie Conley. I'm the parent of a female athlete at Eldorado in track, soccer, and tennis, and I'm speaking in for, in putting the lights in on the track that should have been done many years ago. Eldorado's always been small, but the past two years, the lack of field space has made it impossible for coaches and athletes to get in the time they need to train and condition safely and properly. It's becoming embarrassingly clear that we are not doing right by our athletes, both female and in sports that are sometimes marginalized. I've watched tennis athletes get shin splints because they are expected to condition on the cement tracks. I've watched soccer girls sprain their ankles in holes because they're on elementary school grounds, and the lights would help provide time for these guys. I'm also a next, immediate next-door neighbor. I'm also here for track. They definitely need that field desperately. But I'm also a next-door neighbor to a Placentia school. I know inconveniences, but inconveniences do not go above a student's confidence and support in their growth.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Next four speakers, Ryan Selway, Kristin, Ginny Patrilla, and Lynda Mannion. Mr. Selway, you're up first.
I didn't write anything down. Anyway, I'm here to talk on behalf of Eldorado and the Lights. I lived here for 15 years, moved away my freshman year to high school, moved to Houston. I'm back in this community. I've lived here for 10 years. And my wife and I told her, this is where you raise a family. I got two sons, one at Eldorado, one at Tuffery. I coach six different sports in this community. It's a shame that we can't find field space mostly for the safety of these kids, especially going through the COVID and everything we went through. I see so many kids out there that need to be out playing. They need to put their phones down. They need to be out playing. Anyway, it's heartbreaking to me that we're even at this point with this. And for all those that live behind Eldorado and don't want lights, I live right by Tuffery, and you guys put pickleball courts in, and I know all you guys are there, 6:30 in the morning till 9:00 at night on the last house right by them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I ain't said nothing!
There's lights at Tuffery, too. I live right behind Tuffery as well, and there are lights there. There's band in the morning, and there's PE all day long. I bought a house near a school knowing that there would be noise. That's expected. Eldorado's long overdue for those lights. I went to Eldorado. My kids both go to Eldorado. They're both athletes, and our practices get canceled because the grass is too wet. We don't have enough field space. We have less field space, actually, than all of the other schools in the district. So, not only that, we don't have a lighted field. We don't have the same ability to practice as the other schools in our district, because a few, I think it's about eight residents don't want these lights. Our kids deserve these lights. They need these lights so that they can practice, and we have enough time, and we can do our sports. We've also added another sport to our school that uses the field. Flag football starts next year with even less field space now because we have more kids and more teams. I know parking is a concern, but Brookhaven, it's by permit only, so they can take that up with the police, and there's no stadium access to there. And the band is another concern, but maybe the Board can make a rule that maybe band practices only in the morning or only at night, but not both, because that's a very valid concern for them.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Ginny?
Hello, my name is Ginny Patrilla, and I am a mother to an Eldorado senior. I'm also a product of the district as I graduated from Valencia, class of '91. I've also worked in the district, and I've been a teacher mostly outside the district for about 24 years now. And I am here in support of Mrs. Rayberg. I've seen the video firsthand. My daughter has had her for anatomy and physiology. My daughter also had her for AP Environmental Science. My daughter just has loved her as a teacher, and I've seen her teach firsthand. So, I've seen how she's an advocate for students, for all students. Those of you parents who are sitting here saying, well, some of those conversations should have been had at home. If the students felt comfortable asking their parents at home, then they would. But there are teachers in this district who are advocates for those students, who don't have that kind of communication with their parents. And we need teachers like Mrs. Rayberg, who are passionate, who are an advocate for their students, and who are strong science teachers. That is one of the areas of weakness in our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Lynda Mannion, and I'm the Apple President, and I'm here tonight to present a check to the district. You can take it. I reached out there. Every year, the Anaheim Ducks does a special educators night, and they honor educators all over, all over the county. And every year, we take as many teachers as want to come, and every year, we have the most teachers of any, any district in Orange County. And the benefit of that is whoever brings the most students or the most teachers wins the proceeds from the silent auction. And every year, we win. And every year, we donate it to the school district, and we donated it to the Gear Up program. This, in the past, this year, we are donating it to the PYOUSD Unified Dance. Every year, for the last two years, Yorba Linda Middle School has hosted the Unified Dance for special education students of all secondary schools in, in our district. And so, we're giving $1,586 to support the Unified Dance.
Thank you, ma'am. Next four speakers, Alyssa Sylvester, Steve Strobel, Catherine Massey, and Brooke Ulrich. Go ahead, Ms. Sylvester.
Okay, hello. I'm a parent, I'm a parent of two students at Eldorado and a few, and in a few years, a third. My sophomore plays football and lacrosse and has been very happy with both programs. His teams are at a disadvantage, though. The struggles with field space have been challenging, especially for his lacrosse team. Last year, they had a practice at Valencia because the school has lights. They had to start practice at 8:00 PM on a school night because the team had to wait for Valencia to be done using their field. As the only high school in the district without lights, it puts our athletes at a huge disadvantage against other schools that have the amenities. Also, safety is a concern. My son's lacrosse team practiced at Wagner until they got moved to Brookhaven. Practicing lacrosse on those fields caused ankle sprains as the grass is uneven. It is also a disadvantage because a team cannot have quality practice not being on the turf. We are asking that our school board make the right decision to add lights on the Eldorado field so that they can practice and play safely on their home field. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Stroble. I'm the father of two student athletes at Eldorado High School. Between them, they play football, soccer, and lacrosse, all of which use the school's turf field, not to mention others like band, track, the North Orange County Striker Soccer Club. This district has four high schools, all of which have turf fields for their high-quality sports programs for both male and female students. However, only three of those fields have lights, allowing multiple school programs, as well as local leagues, such as the Advantage Flag Football League, to use their fields after dark. Is Eldorado thought of as a second-class program that doesn't deserve a field with lights? I've often heard of Eldorado being called the school's spirit school in the district. The Hawksnest was named the best school rooting section in Orange County, and the stands are always filled at every event by both students and parents, whether it be freshmen, JV, or varsity level. My daughter, who plays for the league champion JV girls' lacrosse team, had two games this season called on darkness. Called on darkness. That's push league. I thought that only happened in little league games, not to top-tier high school athletic teams.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Masick, and I'm a senior at Eldorado High School. I've been in this district my whole life. I am in Ms. Rayberg's one anatomy class. I'm here to speak on a teacher who is loved and who is loved by every kid and adult I've ever met. Former students still speak very highly of her. I do not think an almost 20-year career should be thrown out by a one-minute video that was taken out of context. This anatomy class has been helpful for me and for my future endeavors. This anatomy class has taught me the different, the different types of breaks and bones, the different stages of moles, to make sure they don't go to a stage where it's bad, and what to do in a medical emergency. This class has given students a forum to ask anonymous questions during the reproductive unit that they did not feel comfortable asking with their name. A professional, a professional answered them in a professional way. I think that the situation needs to be evaluated more before this amazing teacher has been lost of her job. I want to say thank you for listening me, to listening to me and letting me speak.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brooke Ulrich, and I'm a senior at Eldorado High School. I am not here today to speak on behalf of my school or Mrs. Rayberg, but to simply share my thoughts and some facts about the situation. Mrs. Rayberg is a beloved AP Environmental Science, anatomy, and physiology teacher in our school's science department. I mean it when I say I have never met a student or faculty member at my school who has negative opinions about her. A one-minute video clip of Mrs. Rayberg answering anonymous questions from her students in her first-period anatomy class, an optional elective offered only to upperclassmen, was posted to Instagram this week. While answering one of the questions, Mrs. Rayberg used anatomical terms to properly and most accurately answer the question so that her students would best understand. As someone who supports Mrs. Rayberg, as someone who supports Mrs. Rayberg and believes that she simply answered the question most accurately and appropriately for her students, it was important for me to clear up some common misconceptions I heard. Mrs. Rayberg has brought me so much joy on campus, and not only to her students, but to the people around her. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next four, Shari, Judy DeJardine, Sarah Cabrillo, and Chris Peliki.
One exception to the First Amendment, as decided in a 5-4 ruling by the Supreme Court of the United States and Board of Education, Island Trees Union Free School District versus PICO, is that books can be removed from school library shelves if they are pervasively vulgar, basically repeated vulgarity, repeated explicit reference to sex. Six months ago, I stood here and read the book, This Book is Gay, which was found in our school libraries. Every page of this book has images and descriptions of boys engaging all types of sex. Since then, multiple families have sent emails and have spoken about other books in our library that repeat explicit sex on every page. I'm standing here again to ask you what it is going to take for this Board to audit our school libraries and remove any book that is considered pervasively vulgar, books that repeat explicit sex. We are not here to ban books. We are simply asking to remove the porn. Thank you.
Judy?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Judy DeJardine. I'm here as a grandmother. My grandchildren go to Mabel Payne, and I was wondering if there is an updated teacher's manual that could be presented to every new hire and to be presented to existing teachers what is appropriate to say in the classroom. I think this would, I know trustee Anderson said you were working on a teacher's manual. I don't know if that's been completed or not, but I do think it's important to have guidelines of what teachers can say in the classroom, because we know that there has been issues at Esperanza, Kramer Middle School, and now this incident at Eldorado. But again, I do want to have an investigation and have a fair hearing, but I do think there needs to be a current manual. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I don't like talking in front of people, but I'm gonna do this. I was listening to the Board meeting last week, or last month, and I was listening to the people that were speaking with regards to the Aldo Lights. And I was, I shouldn't say appalled, I was actually very sad for the people that were talking, talking about, they wanted to make sure that the lights went out at a certain time. It was gonna decrease their property values. I live behind Esperanza High School to the point that I can throw a water bottle to my niece on the track field. I see the lights. I hear all of the band. It does not interfere with the families. It does not interfere with people going to sleep at night. You can get blackout shades in your rooms. You can make that available for the students to not get hurt, have the ability to allow them to play their sports that they need to play and not have to have parents drive all over the district in order to get them where they need to go. So, I just, I think that, I think we need to put the lights in, and I think we've got the money for it, and we just need to do it.
Hello, my name's Chris, and I run a business. I manage hundreds of people, and I need to let you know that if any of my employees engaged in highly sexual explicit content in the workplace, they would likely be removed. Certainly, they'd be severely docked for sexual harassment. What Ms. Rayberg did is sexual harassment. All of these students don't know that. It's, it's really shocking. Okay, I'll just, can we add my time if this guy's gonna interrupt me? Okay. At this point, it's very shocking and very sad that our district is at this point where we have these conversations. We all need to get together to protect these children from this type of conversation in the workplace. I really hope that we can come together as a community and try to do the right thing, which is to have a guideline, as Ms. Judy was talking about, for our teachers. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Evan Angel, Mike Hartman, Courtney, Anne Sue Sawyer. Evan, go ahead and kick us off.
Hi. My name is Evan Angel. I am a student of Eldorado in Ms. Rayberg's class. I took anatomy to learn just that. Judy Rayberg has been there to answer all questions about the body, regardless of how stupid, embarrassing, or in-depth they are. She is a teacher who absolutely loves what she does and her students. I have faced discrimination for my identity growing up, some happening in schools, by parents and teachers. Rayberg has been there to support me and other students, and she has been there to give in-depth support and love for us, and at the same time, educating us in-depth about whatever we are learning in anatomy. I believe her career should not be ended because she did her job. Sexual harassment is not what took place in that classroom. I was there in that class, sitting right next to her, giving insight on the question that was asked.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mike Hartman. I'm in support of the lights at Eldorado. For twenty-five years, I've lived on Brookhaven Avenue on the backside of the school, and we've been waiting for the lights ever since. We moved into the community like most people have because of the school district and the support for our kids and the opportunities they have. I have a unique perspective on it because I've had one son that attended Valencia and played soccer, who served on the Board Committee as a student before Jackson a couple of years ago. And my current son plays soccer and football at Eldorado. And the opportunities they have because of the lights for Jackson, where it allowed him to take a six-period class, it allowed him to have some flexibility on there and truly be a student athlete. When we look at now at Eldorado, the July and August football practices in a hundred-degree heat, or the soccer games that end at dusk when it's dark, it's just not fair for the students at Eldorado.
My name's Sue Sawyer. I'm a teacher at Esperanza. I'm going to read fast because it's a minute. What happened to the golden rule in old-fashioned civility? We work too dang hard for parents and students to try to catch teachers making a mistake or try to entrap teachers for their own political interests. I assure you, every student, teacher, administrator, person, and parent in this room has made mistakes. It's how we learn. We fail, first attempt in learning. Sometimes students, teachers, administrators, and yes, even parents fail. Our job is to teach our students, to catch them doing good things, not to catch them doing bad things. Sometimes they do bad things. They make bad choices. They are, after all, teenagers, and we have procedures in place to protect or to provide corrective action. We have the same for teachers. Their prefrontal cortex is not yet fully developed, so they're going to make mistakes. I try to assume good intentions with all people, students and parents. We have been asked more formally the last three years to grant grace and find ways to help students become successful. I would ask parents and students to do the same. Life's been put in perspective the last two weeks. It's too short.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer.
Most importantly, I want to publicly honor my friend, Amy Madrigal.
Was there a Courtney that wanted to speak? I have a blue card for Courtney. No? Any outside Courtney's? Excellent. Okay. Well, go ahead and continue on. Next four up, Lisa Altman. This looks like Caitlin Berg, Andy Falco, and Brent D. Ms. Altman will be first.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Lisa Altman, a PYL USD parent. I have a few comments regarding the Eldorado teacher caught on hidden camera teaching kids about male-on-male anal sex, sexual pleasure of the prostate, the G-spot, booty holes, vibrators, and how to use them and where to buy them. This was a completely inappropriate, obscene, and perverse discussion being had by this teacher with high school students paid for by our tax dollars. Why is sexually explicit material being taught in our public schools with our tax dollars? Who approved this material? A second issue I want to raise is pornographic materials that are being made available to our students in the school libraries. Who's approving these sexually explicit and graphic materials being introduced into our school libraries and why? I'm not sending my kids to school each day to learn this garbage being introduced by some political activist teacher or librarian. These activist teachers and librarians are abusing their positions of authority to try to sexualize and indoctrinate our kids.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caitlin Berg, and I was part of the school district from kindergarten all the way through senior year of high school, and I hope that this speaks for itself that I'm here eight years after taking Ms. Rayberg's class. Like the young lady that spoke at the beginning, I received an excellent education that is due in part to dedicated teachers like Mrs. Rayberg. I had a serious injury in high school that required an intensive surgery, and while recovering, Mrs. Rayberg dedicated her free time, both before and after school, to helping me catch and keep up in class. If it wasn't for Mrs. Rayberg, I would not have graduated high school on time. As a direct result of Mrs. Rayberg, I graduated on time and now have a successful career in STEM, where I look up to women exactly like her. Thank you to all of my former teachers for helping me make me the successful person I am today, especially Mrs. Rayberg.
The lady before said everything that I wanted to say, and I just simply want to add to that, is that she could be beloved. She could have done many wonderful things. But I love my kids, but they still get disciplined when they do something stupid. So there needs to be some discipline, and I will support any discipline for that teacher that is found for what she did. As far as the lights at Eldorado, those absolutely need to be installed. My son also was on the men's lacrosse team for the sophomores, and because of the scheduling and not having the lights, they only practiced twice before their first game. Every game was getting canceled because the soccer team was on the field or some other sport was busy taking the field, and they couldn't get on there. They were walking to the other elementary schools just to get in a little practice time. It's amazing that we have all the equipment underneath the ground to install these lights, and it hasn't been done to this point. It needs to be done today. Absolutely. Thanks.
I did K through twelve in this district, my kids also, and growing up here, thinking back on my teachers, they would have been just shocked and appalled to have that type of talk going on in the classroom as I grew up here. It's a super easy answer. All it is, is that's not an appropriate question for school and moving on, and that's it. And, you know, I feel bad. I mean, unfortunately, though, in the real world, mistakes, they lead to consequences, and that's what happens for all of us.
Okay. Next four include Stephanie D., Derek Bergner...sorry, Jaclyn, and Trevor Wong.
Hey, I'm Stephanie. I'd like to take this out of the context of a Q and A discussion and remind you that the book Kite Runner is still being taught in language arts at Eldorado and other high schools in the district. I wish I could read to you what the mom is called on page seven, but there's a civility clause here that doesn't let me do that. Also, chapter six is about the forced rape of a male child. It's described...I can't read that here either, and I've gotten in trouble for reading it here, actually. So I'm going to skip that, but if you want to read it, go to Eldorado's language arts class or other high school classes where they're happy to discuss disgusting words and child rape with you. Thank you.
Derek?
This is my first board meeting. This is wild. Good evening, school board members and fellow community members. My name is Derek Bergner. I'm a condensed matter experimental physicist. I am published multiple times in notable journals within my field regarding the research I conducted, and I presented my research in multiple national conferences. I've just successfully defended my master's thesis at the California State University of Long Beach. I've been accepted to multiple universities for a PhD position, and I will be attending USC next fall on a full scholarship. I'll be given medical and dental insurance, a moving stipend, and a livable salary. Without Mrs. Rayberg and the late Mr. Overly, rest in peace, I would have not been able to enjoy any of this. I owe the spark of my career to Ms. Rayberg for not only teaching me the fundamentals of science, but also the fun. Through her teachings, I was able to find my career path before I could vote. That's not something that most people can say nowadays, most young kids. Nowadays, this is a rare opportunity. I would not be where I am without Mrs. Rayberg. I understand the scope and severity of the problem at debate now. I see both sides, and I believe it would be fair to give a suggestion for disciplinary action. However, I do not think that a person should not lose their livelihood for giving information readily available to most students now.
Thank you, Dr. Churness, for committing the month of June to safety awareness. Thank you for taking swift action with the Eldorado teacher who left off guide, who went off guide to discuss obscene and vulgar material. By her removal, you prioritize keeping our children safe. They are not her children. This is further evidence that our district needs to adopt pacing guides for teachers, and their leaders need to be held responsible for holding them accountable to those pacing guides. I've heard there's pacing guides, but they obviously are pretty weak, if that's what we have. I'll add, it's imperative that we follow up to what has been done with obscene and vulgar books in our libraries. Our libraries need an audit, and because I know some of these books are still in the library. In last board meeting, I think one of the people handed you the actual vulgar pictures, and those books have still not been removed from the library. If I could please get a round of applause to dismiss teachers who teach inappropriate materials.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Trevor Wong, and I am a senior at Eldorado High School, a distinguished scholar and a student athlete. I had Mrs. Rayberg last year for AP Environmental Science, and she was one of the kindest teachers that I ever had during my time at ELDO, and I wouldn't have passed the AP test or the class without her. She loves her job and her students so much and only wants the best for her classes, regardless of anyone may have told you online otherwise. What she said in that classroom was definitely not sexual harassment and was answered in response to an anonymous student-asked Q and A in an optional elective anatomy class and was done in good faith, like so many others have said before me. As a Christian, I believe that everyone deserves a second chance, and just as so many other second chances have been extended to me and so many others by this district, I implore you, the Board of the Placenta Yorblena Unified School District, to give Mrs. Rayberg a second chance and let her return to the job and the students that she loves so much. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make one more call out for Courtney. Courtney, if there are no Courtney's, then public comment is closed, and we're going to take a ten-minute recess. Thank you. All right. Thank you once again for those that came up and spoke during public comment. We do appreciate all your input, and we are taking things in consideration, for sure. The next portion of our meeting includes some of the action items that are part of our agenda tonight, one being curriculum and instruction. So I need a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the following high school history social science materials for implementation in the 2324 school year, World History, 10th grade, National Geographic Voyages of Exploration, US History, 11th grade, National Geographic, America Through the Lens, Government, 12th grade, McGraw-Hill, Impact, Principles of American Democracy, Economics, 12th grade, McGraw-Hill, Impact, Principles of Economics.
Second.
Who seconded that?
I did.
I'm sorry. I wouldn't look in your way. I apologize. All right. Dr. Adamson, if you would, please.
Well, thank you once again, and good evening once again. At the May ninth board meeting, the board voted to place the proposed high school history social science curriculum on a thirty-day public display. With the thirty-day public display period now complete, we're seeking your final approval to formally adopt these materials for implementation in the 2324 school year. I would like to invite Mrs. Aguilar, Director of High School Education, to provide a brief summary of the feedback and to respond to any questions you may have. Mrs. Aguilar.
Good evening, President Youngblood, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Churness, and Executive Cabinet. Last month, data was shared with you about the high school history social science team's pilot process and subsequent selections for textbook adoption. National Geographic was recommended for World History and US History, and McGraw-Hill was recommended for Government and Economics, both with overwhelmingly positive feedback from students and teachers. The history social science materials have been on display for thirty days, and we have received no community feedback. Tonight, we ask for your approval of these high school history social science materials to be used beginning with the 202324 school year. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have comments. I did get a chance to go through all the books. I specifically looked at, well, all of them, but the economics, I was actually surprised that there was so much additional pictures, and it almost looked like a science and a social science book, just on the economics. I was really impressed by that particular one, but the rest of them, I didn't see any problems with. I really enjoyed looking through them and learning a bit. So thank you.
I thought the Impact ones were really well-done, and there was a lot of detail, and so I think those ones were great. I did have some issues with the National Geographics, 10th and 11th, but it's more, you know, and I kept reading more and more chapters, trying to figure out if it was just like that chapter or if it was throughout the book. So in the end, I really liked a lot of what was done in there. Some chapters were, I thought, sparsely covered, and I'll just give you an example of that. And my hope is that we encourage our teachers, when they're teaching these curriculums, to really go back to primary sources and really teach them. In the one book, it talked about during the Civil War, you know, there's no Gettysburg Address. There's a bullet point for the Thirteenth Amendment. There's one bullet point for the Fourteenth Amendment, and one bullet point for the Fifteenth Amendment. And there was just a lot that I felt like was missing, but those documents are, you know, readily available online, and teachers can pull them and do more. I just feel like so many times we just brush on history instead of really diving into, and so...but then other chapters were really great and gave so much detail, like the Civil Rights Movement, you know. They covered so many of the speeches and the court cases, really in-depth, and I love that. So it was just kind of like a mix, but I think at the end that these books are, you know, will support, and I think, you know, as our teachers use their skills to really pull in those primary sources, I think they'll be great.
Well, I appreciate that, and that's something, you know, as we do our summer trainings on the framework and on the textbook, those are things we can share and incorporate into that information. You know, as they look through the social science framework, it's going to be important to match up that framework with all of the sections in the textbook and really to ensure that all of that's covered. So it's definitely feedback we'll share. Thanks.
I just want to agree with Ms. Anderson. There was a portion in the Civil Rights section in which half a page was dedicated to BLM, which I was a little curious of why that was in the Civil Rights section, but for 99.9% of the other book, the other portions were perfectly fine. And I'm sure, given the teacher's ability to teach this, I think it would go over fine. Any other comments? No? Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Frazier, seconded by Ms. Buck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? All right, motion carries five oh. I will need a motion on Human Resources.
Pursuant to Government Code 54953, make a motion to approve the employment contract for Dr. Isaac Gates as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources with an annual salary of $218,340. He shall also receive all incentives available to other members of the district's certificated management staff, including longevity pay and mileage stipend. The contract will remain in effect from June 22nd, 2023, through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
I think we have to give it to Todd. Just because we feel sorry for you, you're not fast tonight.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Blade, seconded by Mr. Frazier. Any comments? Any comments other than, "I should have been a doctor, I missed my calling"?
What kind of doctor?
I didn't say that. Okay, so all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five oh. Moving on. Our next portion is the Consent Calendar. These actions proposed for the Consent Calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of the scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with the knowledge on the block vote items. Are there any of these items that would like to be pulled, Ms. Buck?
Yes, I'd like to pull number 12, please.
Number 12.
And I would like to pull 29, 30, 36, and 37.
Oh geez, hold on, slow down. 29.
30.
30.
36 and 37.
Any others?
We both apologized because we could have adjourned at like 6:30, so we're very sorry.
We'll try to go fast.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve the other listed items, with the exception of those numbers.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Buck, Ms. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, so let's look back at these items.
Okay, so for number 12, I move that we approve contract renewal to provide employee life insurance coverage with Anthem Blue Cross Life and Health Insurance Company effective October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024.
I'll second.
And the only reason I brought it up was I was recently at Delegate Assembly, and there was a large discussion about cybersecurity. And one of the, and I did pass this along to Dr. Churnus, but I just wanted to let you all know as well. As we were discussing, some of the speakers that were up there had an issue with cybersecurity, and they were hacked. And what was stolen was not student information, but it was the employees' information. So, all of the enrollment that you do for health insurance and various things, where you have to submit your family's social security numbers, those kind of things. So, they were hacked, that was the information that was stolen. They ended up having to pay the ransom to get it back. But they talked about making sure that we have guidelines in place on document retention and destruction, and not keeping those items just in the servers just because we have them there, but make sure that we're removing those items that we don't necessarily need to store so that we can prevent ourselves from having any cybersecurity or liability issues. So, just passing that along.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on that portion? No? Okay, so all of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. It's carried five oh. Okay, so our next one, Ms. Blade, summer 29?
I make a motion to approve the 2023 to 2024 Cal State University-Fullerton Federal Work Study Off-Campus Agreement for avid tutors.
Second.
All right, so I'll give Ms. Buck this time.
So, I don't really have a question, but I guess I kind of do have a question. It says that we are partnering with Cal State Fullerton. So, my question is, are they partnering with us in certain aspects and not in others? So, it's not a full-on boycott?
I don't know if I have an answer to that question right now, Mrs. Blades, but we have utilized, we've worked with them, and they have provided tutors for our avid students for multiple years. And so, I don't believe there's been any change to that, this particular partnership.
So, they'll provide tutors right now, but not student teachers? Okay?
That is correct.
Point of clarification, thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five oh. Number 30, Ms. Blade.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the professional development hours for certificated staff, grades 6 through 12, to attend summer institute training in June and August of 2023.
Second.
So, my question is, as our grades have, or our scores, grades, things like that, have continued to decline, what can you tell the public what will be different? How are we going to be handling the professional development this summer to better serve our students in the fall when they come back? Like, what will be different about the professional development? What have we added?
Thank you for that question, and that's a great opportunity to share a little bit more detail. Well, are you asking specifically at the secondary level, or you wanting for all grades, TK through 12th grade?
Yeah, 6 to 12.
Okay. One of the additions that we have added specifically is a focus on differentiation, which specifically UDL, which really allows for teachers to meet the needs of all students in their classroom regardless of their abilities, regardless of their backgrounds or their language proficiency. And so, that's really something we're wanting to be able to focus on specifically. A big part for secondary is also with the new history/social science curriculum. We're offering that as part of the training to be sure that all of our teachers have the tools and they're equipped with the needs that they require in order to be able to instruct and use our new materials effectively. In addition to that, we're also going to be offering a variety of collaboration opportunities for teachers to come together to, I know it was mentioned earlier about, you know, really bringing on pacing guides and building of assessments to ensure that we're assessing what's being taught. And so, that really will allow for our teachers to be not only trained in those areas, but also to allow for collaboration for them to build the pacing guides, but also ensure that the assessments we're using are effective. I know those are the things that are coming to mind right now. We have a full menu of options. I mean, it took us, goodness, four months that we had all of our ed services staff, we had all of our teachers and our TOCs involved in building a lot of those opportunities. We have, in some of them, outside consultants who are coming and that we're partnering with to provide some of that professional development as well. And this is something we really haven't been able to offer in the past, you know, through the summer. We have the funds available this year, and so for that reason, we're excited. In addition to that, it is, we're able to, we've increased the hourly rate for our teachers. We're able to really compensate them well. And again, that's something that we haven't had the opportunity to do in the past. And I would even say, looking back at the past three years, where, you know, since COVID, we really haven't been able to offer much professional development at all because typically, our model in the past was always to offer it during the days. You know, the school days where we could have subs. So, again, that alone is different in the sense that we're offering just this robust menu of offerings during the summer. But I can absolutely provide a copy of, you know, of additional trainings that are not coming to mind for me right now.
Of course.
That's just a sampling.
And so, I know that you mentioned pacing guides, and I've been told the past couple of years, we do have pacing guides and standards, and I think we're finding out that we don't. Can we ensure that we will have pacing guides and standards in place for the next year?
We have the standards in place, but really, the pacing guides will allow us to provide a little bit more consistency in what's being taught, right, according to the standards. We've been very clear in the ALCAP on exactly what we're going to be working on for next year. We're focusing predominantly in language arts and in math first because it takes time. We're also wanting to look at science and history/social science, given the fact that science, we just adopted that a year ago, new materials, and then history/social science as well will be our focus. And really, then, from, you know, once we have that in place for a year, the focus will then fall into other content areas at the secondary level. At the elementary level, absolutely, we, you know, have those in place moving into the beginning of the year for both math and language arts. And the goal is to start that work during the summer for same, it'll be social science and science as well at the elementary level.
And so, my question is, does this have to be done at the district level? Or can the teachers at the certain sites, like, say, the different grades, can they get together and work on pacing guides? So, we can ensure that we get this done?
Teachers will be involved in that work, but really, the request that we've received from teachers specifically and from the school sites is to really have that at the district level so we can have consistency across the board. But we absolutely need the teachers' involvement in that. There's no ways our TOCs or ed services team could do that alone. And so, the intention is, yes, we're bringing together teachers, and we're paying them for that work during the summer. We're starting the work, and the idea would be for that to continue then, you know, through next year.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries five oh. Number 36, Ms. Blade.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with Film Ed Academy of the Arts for Eldorado Esperanza Valenci and Yorblon High Schools for the 20232024 school year.
Second.
Is this, is this an enhancement of what they have? Because I know that they have a pretty great program, as it is at all four of our schools. And so, are we upping the ante, or is this just a renewal of what we've had?
Well, there are a couple of parts to that question. So, we are renewing what we had in place last year in this. I understand that, yes, it's the offerings that we provide already for through services, but this specifically goes towards paying for the video yearbooks for every single student. So, that's really where the cost is involved. And you may recall, two years ago, there was a request, in fact, from certain board members. We were only being able to, the cost was falling on the school sites, and so, there were only some schools who were able to afford that. And so, really, the increase to this cost was intended to allow for equity across all four high schools. So, that was the.
Yes, that's what I was asking. This is amazing, and I wanted everybody to know this.
Thank you for showcasing that.
And then the next one, oh.
Let's go ahead and vote on that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. And number 37?
I make a motion to approve the subscription agreement with churned in for all secondary and alternative education schools and the Placenta Yorblenda School District for 20232024 school year.
Second.
So, my only question about this, and we've had, you know, issues with a lot of the parents about the writing, and they don't feel that their kids are writing enough essays and, you know, reading enough books. And so, this is another program that basically talks about, you know, plagiarism and certain things. But I really have to give a shout-out to an English teacher at Yorblon High School, who the way that she fights plagiarism is these kids are actually doing writing the old-school way. And they are, you know, they have to get all of their sources, they have to get whatever it is, they have to get it together, and then they have to turn it in to her, and she looks at it, approves it, gives it back. And then, the next day or the next week, whatever it is, they come back in with more sources, whatever it is they need, she approves it. And then, you write the essay in the classroom, and you're writing, you know, you're writing it out. And I think that is the key here to dealing with plagiarism, and they are actually writing. They're not using a computer, and they're not, they don't have the opportunity to do it. I mean, and that's the purest form. And so, I feel like with this teacher, I'm just going to say who it is. It's Mrs. Dagenpat at Yorblon High School, and she is amazing, an amazing, amazing teacher. Her whole class loves her. But, and then, other parents whose kids are in there, everyone is just very, very appreciative of what is she's doing for these kids. And it just seems like it's not online, it's actually delving into these books, and it's going back to actually, you know, doing the work and the preparation. And so, I'm wondering, is if, do we need this stuff, like churned in, to spend the type of money for that? Or do we actually just really dive back into writing essays? Because I know a lot of parents have said, hey, my kid has only written one essay this entire year. How are they going to be ready for ninth grade? And so, is it a focus that we need to turn to instead of the plagiarism sides and all of this stuff to catch the kids? Is there a reason that they have to plagiarize? Or, you know, or do they not have the tools maybe to write the paper? And so, should we maybe focus back on the basics, would be my question? And so, just experiencing this as a parent, that's my thought.
So, I will speak to writing in general, and then I will pass it over to Dr. Adamson. As a result of the pandemic, writing was the largest academic learning deficit for all students. Because when they were at home for a year and a half or two years, they didn't do much writing at all. Some didn't write at all. So, during Zoom school, you know, you could get through math, you can get through science, but you weren't writing essays. And so much of writing, as you said, is oftentimes in class getting support from the teachers, right? And getting feedback from the teachers. So, what we're seeing is huge deficits in writing at all levels, and this district will have to invest in more writing. And that's through training, it's through support, and it's through programs. So, that is a separate issue than, you know, whether or not we purchase this for the plagiarism piece, but it's related. So, we will come back with plans to invest in writing in our district. And even before the pandemic, students were writing less than they were even 10 years ago. You know, you'll see, even, I see my own kids, you know, you have, it's evolved from autocomplete to, you know, they'll just hit the microphone and talk into the iPad or computer, and the sentences will come out, right? So, they're just, there's inherent technology now, aside from AI, that is allowing kids to write less. And it's a lifelong skill that kids are going to need when they go to college and beyond. And many students will come back and tell you that if they got a solid education and they had great writing teachers, it carried them through college and into the professional world. So, it's a huge issue, it's a topic we're going to continue to address here.
That was beautifully said, well-said, Dr. Churnus. And I think the only piece I would add to that is that it has been a tool that our teachers have, you know, been relying on for a variety of different reasons. Yes, it's a tool to help develop writing skills, but it's also a tool for them to be able to utilize to, you know, to verify and fact-check some of the writing itself. But I do love everything that you were referring to earlier. I think those are all, those are all good practices, and I have every faith that many of our teachers are following through and have those practices in place. But, you know, I think we would like the opportunity to be able to, you know, have, continue to offer the program, and perhaps the next year to be able to look at, you know, other options, and is it something that we need to continue to rely on? I know that with the advancements of AI and ChatGPT being, you know, one particular, you know, program right now that is available to students, this, you know, serves as a very reliable tool. But again, I think it would be something that we, you know, want to at least have that, the gift of time to be able to explore and possibly see if there are other options out there by the end of next year.
You just said what I was going to bring up next is with the advent of AI, ChatGPT, and all the things, that the scary part about it, there's also learning to use that tool. And we need to be able to, when they go into the workforce, they're probably not to be given a pencil and a piece of paper. They're going to be given an iPad or a computer. So, being able to blend those worlds, I think, is important, and having a tool like this that helps protect against the bad part of AI. But then again, if they learn to use the tool well, it's going to benefit them in the future, and that's what this is all about. So, I think it makes sense, if it's, if there's a better tool, then let's look at that. If there's better strategies, let's use those. So, but I'm all about using the tools that sets them up for success after school, for sure.
I'm glad we're talking about AI and ChatGPT and all this because it's going to be incredibly important how we teach our kids to utilize that in a responsible way that helps them and not negatively impacts. There's, if you have time, Saul Khan from the Khan Academy did a TED Talk about ChatGPT and how they're using it to tutor kids. And so, instead of giving them the answers, the ChatGPT will pull a question that will pull more out of the kid and make them search a little bit more. So, it's just an interesting way that we're going to have to figure out how to navigate through this. And it's changing education. They say 2023 is the year of AI. So, how are we going to be on the forefront of that and not chasing it and trying to catch it on the back end? So, I love the conversation.
All I just want to know is that the kids can write.
They need to be able to write, and they need to be able to discourage from cheating. So, this could be a Belinda book.
Do they write cursive, or do they write block? Okay, okay, that's too much, I apologize. All right, okay, so we have, item 37 is. All right, um, okay, so we have uh, item thirty-seven is uh, is open. We need to go ahead and vote on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, uh, that brings us, before I get to the adjournment, I'd like to, to uh, remind everyone that is school safety month and I'd like to uh, thank our um, police officers that are taking care of us tonight and uh, are here every night that uh, that we're having the, the meeting to help us feel safe and, and secure. So, thank you again. Uh, also, tonight, we are going to adjourn our meeting in memory of Amy Madrigal, who passed away suddenly on Monday, May twenty-second. Amy was the assistant principal at Eldorado High School for the past ten years and served in many roles on the Valencia High School campus before her time as a golden hawk. She was a devoted parent in our district, alumni of our schools and an employee of our district for the past twenty-four years. She will be greatly missed by so many across our entire Placentia Orbelinda Unified School District community. I'll take a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So, I have the motion by Ms. Carrie Buck, seconded by Ms. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you, folks, we'll see you here on June twentieth for our next meeting. Have a good night.